Okay, we'll go ahead and call the September 19th City-County Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Matthew, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bollinger?
Here.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Here.
Commissioner Sissel?
Here.
Commissioner Drain? Commissioner Gay? Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Okay, and the next item on our agenda is approval of amendments from the September 5th meeting. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bollinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel? Commissioner Ritchie?
Upstain.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Chair Graham?
Commissioners, you have in your packets the subdivision of site development plans. Are there any questions or comments on those? Hearing none, we'll accept those as submitted. New business, we have our financial report, and is Drew is going to present that for us? All right.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come present the audit for the most recent time period for the City-County Government Planning. In your, I believe you've got the financials in there. The best thing I can tell you performing the audit is that we didn't see anything that was out of line. Now, in the report, you'll read many more words than that that will say the same thing, but in, you know, at its crux, that's what we mean. So everything is very, very consistent, you know, with the prior year. You had your, construction fees were up a little bit. The interest income, you also notice a change in it. Makes sense because the interest rates were higher last year than they have been in the past. But other than that, everything was in line with what it had been in previous years. I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has regarding the financials.
Commissioners, any questions? And is this a, is this a motion? So do we have a motion for, to accept?
So moved.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bollinger?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Chair Graham?
Yes, sir. Next item on our agenda is letters of credit and performance bonds. You have those in your packet, and you can see those on the agenda for review. Any questions about those? Okay, and that is not a motion. That is a motion. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bollinger?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Chair Graham?
Yes, sir. And Ben, do we have any old business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so, Hamp?
Mr. Graham, I request that you order that the record for tonight include all of the relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications for each of the staff witnesses. Finally, I request that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
Do you all swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right. And so we'll go ahead and move into our public hearing portion of the meeting. First item on our agenda is 2024-03 Flume, GVTP Development LLC, and Ronald Haggard have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a portion of track of land containing 13.574 acres located at Zero Nashville Road, approximately 488 feet north of the Fuller Drive from low-density residential to mixed-use residential. This will be a vote for the full board, and we'll have our staff report.
Thank you, sir. Give me just a minute and get this PowerPoint going. What'd you say? Control what?
Control K. To turn off the automatic slide.
I'll learn it for next time. All right. So we did have a pre-application meeting back in August for the property you just referenced, located on Nashville Road. This is the current aerial view for the property, and you can see that the existing zoning is agriculture. The current use is also agriculture, and then the future land use map is low-density residential. And we did, thanks to Matthew, we've got a few photos of the site if we need to reference these. We have these handy. And then the area in question for this application this evening is basically this middle section here. This is the area where the applicants have applied to amend the future land use map from low-density residential to mixed-use residential. And if the future land use map amendment is successful, the applicant would later like to file an application to rezone the entire area that you see on the screen. But particularly, the area subject to the flume amendment would be proposed to be rezoned to RS-1D if it were approved. Is the concept not on here? That's okay, we can go to the website and pull it up. Sorry, bear with me here. I'm sorry. We're getting there. Do you know how to rotate it?
It should be over the zoom.
Above the zoom? Oh, yep. Okay, sorry about that. So here's the conceptual layout. Again, the area in question this evening is basically this middle, middle area here. And in this area, the applicants are proposing to develop that portion of the property with attached single-family units. So townhomes are the planned residential unit type there. In our review of the application, staff did find that the proposed future land use map amendment is generally in agreement with LU 1.1.4 and generally compatible with the surrounding area. We have a few considerations for you to look at this evening. The first being on page five, looking at prime farmland. We have noted that the property is, 50% of the property is designated as prime farmland. We also have a point for your consideration relating to the proposed minimum home size. Also, on page five, under surrounding architectural features, we've just noted that homes in idle acres, if we go back to the map here, let me just jump back. So idle acres is this subdivision just right down here. And then Hossel Street, it's kind of cut off. It's, it's back here under the, the legend. That's Hossel Street. So those were the two most proximate areas we looked at in our review. And so in idle acres, we found that the median home size in that neighborhood is 1,700 square feet. And then for Hossel Street, the median home size in that area is around 1,500 square feet. And the applicants are proposing a minimum home size for the attached single-family homes. Again, that's the area subject to this application, shown in the central portion of the site. The proposed minimum home size for those residences is 900 square feet. And we've just noted that that's below the median that's identified in the area. We also had a consideration looking at the garage requirement. There is no garage requirement proposed for the attached single-family homes, and we did note that the majority of homes in idle acres and along Hossel Street either incorporate some type of garage or carport on those properties. And then last, looking at the building materials, in idle acres, homes are comprised with exteriors of brick and also have brick foundations. And then on Hossel Street, those homes are a mix of brick, vinyl, or aluminum siding with brick or stone foundations. A handful of those homes utilize split-face block. And since vinyl is not a prevalent material in the nearby neighborhood, staff suggested that the applicants consider limiting the percentage of vinyl that could be utilized for each residential structure. However, the applicants indicated they did not want to change the material requirements. And then staff also suggested that the applicants provide information about the proposed building foundation materials, and this was left unaddressed. So those are a few things we wanted to point out for your consideration. But again, overall, we did find that the application complied with the majority of the review criteria, and therefore, our staff recommendation is for approval pending any public hearing testimony and discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions?
Going to the density map, there was a zone change in 2020 where the density's 10.4 units per acre, and it looks like it's empty. What kind of units are those supposed to be?
Uh, let me find that reference here. Let's see. Okay, let me go back to the map here. I might actually, I'm gonna have to actually go back to the website and pull up the map because I don't think that shows up on the packet maps that you have. Okay, so here's the, the property that you're reviewing right now, and the zone change from 2020 that's referenced is this property down here just past South Warren, if you can see where my cursor is. So that's the approved density. It's not yet been developed.
So what are they supposed to be, total homes?
Uh, there's actually, if I turn on the zoning map, I believe it's a mix.
I think it's mixed-use. It's David Targor's.
The zoning, I believe, is RM3 upfront, so there was a multifamily component. And then I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, the back area here that's zoned single-family called for 20 homes are attached single-family.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff?
Rachel, how many, did you say 900 homes were planned in this first?
Not 900. 900 was the home size that they have planned.
900 square feet.
Yeah, 900 square feet. We did receive a revised unit count after we finalized your staff reports and mailed those to you, and so they are proposing a maximum of 208 single-family attached dwelling units. So the attached product, they're proposing 208. Again, this is the area subject to the future land use map amendment that's before you this evening. If that all goes according to plan, they would come back and apply to rezone, and then in that case, they also have a single-family attached product, or detached, but that's outside of what's under review tonight.
All right, thank you.
Has anybody done the calculations for the density for those new, with those changes?
The density that's calculated in your staff report would be the overall density that's just planned for the whole development. I didn't have a unit count specifically for just the 13 acres that's under review. So the density calculation in your staff report does take into account the whole development if it were to move forward in the future.
So I think this is just a question for staff. This, this is just a flume amendment change. However, is it appropriate for us to go ahead and have these DPC and density questions? Hamp, can you help me with that?
Well, but won't they, won't they have to bring that back? Tonight's just flume, correct?
It is, but density and the draft development plan conditions are included in your report because some of those items speak to those compatibility issues that you're normally reviewing with a future land use map amendment. So it's fair to ask questions about density.
Sure, but they'll have to bring, they'll have to bring an application back to talk about the building materials and that such, such.
Right. It's preliminary, as proposed this evening. They wanted you to have an idea of what you could expect if this were approved.
Same with, same with, same with the size of houses, too. Tonight, we're really not voting on that. We're just voting on the flume, correct?
You're voting on the future land use map, yes.
So.
Mr. Chairman, everything you all have said is the truth. Exactly what.
And so is it appropriate, if we have concerns about DPCs or density, to go ahead and telegraph that to council and let them have those discussions? Or do we only consider the flume?
Well, because, because whatever you, in my opinion, whenever we talk about tonight, nothing's binding. So just if they get up there and say, sure, we'll do all brick when they come back, that doesn't have to be what their application says because it's not binding. All, all tonight is just flume.
It is, but if you look on page 24 of your staff report, that outlines the procedures to amend the future land use map. And so in reviewing this application, you need to evaluate whether or not the proposed development is compatible with the existing surrounding development, which must be demonstrated by the applicant. Your review should include a compatibility assessment of the proposed use, which includes but is not limited to location and bulk of buildings and other structures, building height, building materials, intensity of use, density of development. And in addition to that, the applicant must prove that the proposed amendment will not result in development that exceeds the capacity of the existing infrastructure. So while these draft development plan conditions aren't binding tonight, the topics that are included within those are still, those, those are trying to address some of the compatibility items that are required under the criteria to amend the future land use map.
And they're still discussable, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Is, is the spokesperson or their representative here tonight?
Good evening, Chris Davenport, 921 College Street, and I swear to tell the truth. You've basically, guys, you've all hit what I want to present here. This is a flume change. I would, just, let me add to that just a little bit. So if I can get to the right, and I always go the, oh, yes, I do the PowerPoint. So if you look at the red box, the, of the two vertical lines, the transition of this property from mixed-use to low-density currently sits at the line closer to Nashville Road. So what this request is doing is moving that line further away from Nashville Road. And the reason for that is because of the housing type. The density that we're asking for, we would not even need to amend the flume. We could come here on a zone change with that density, but because of the, the single-family attached structures have four, up to four being attached, more than two, that's why staff wants that in the mixed-use flume designation. Part of it already is, but in our concept, not all of it is. So we're asking to move that line back a little bit, that line where the flume will now change from mixed-use, and is it commercial or residential? Mixed-use residential to low-density residential would be the line where the single-family attached ends and the single-family detached begins. So I hope I haven't confused you all, but the point I want to make is this development as presented, density-wise, would be accepted in low-density residential without any flume change. But because the developer wishes to have the attached units, up to four units attached instead of just two, that's what's triggering this small flume revision in the middle of the property. That's, that's why we're here tonight. As to the points of discussion, what I'm hearing everybody say here I agree with. If my client came here tonight and expressed why they wanted a certain square footage, where they wanted a certain material, and they said, yes, we'll do that, that would not be binding on them. In fact, the zone application was just tendered today in anticipation, hopefully, hopefully not presumptively, but that the flume is amended. So that would come at you in a, in a month, and that's when those discussions would have. And if the flume is successful, I would present to you at that time why we think certain things material-wise and certain things square footage-wise is important and necessary and really needed in the community. So I'll talk about that as little or as much as you want to tonight. What I would encourage you to focus on, though, is of this whole development, which runs the gambit of, it would run the gambit of commercial frontage and then single-family attached and then single-family detached in the back, the density would already be okay with what I submitted today. The density's not going above what low-density would allow for. It's just the housing type. We sometimes get confused when we see single-family detached structures and concepts. We start to call that multifamily. My clients even do that sometimes. What I intend to bring back here in a month, if this flume is successful, would have no multifamily in it. It's all single-family. So whereas the Tartar property, Ms. Sissel, that you referred to, that was the 10-plus density south of South Warren, that is the Tartar, I call it the Tartar property, that development flows from commercial to multifamily, okay, to single-family attached. Our intention is to flow from commercial, no multifamily, single-family attached, and then single-family detached. That's, that's the hope for the project. So that, those points to consider, I would submit to you are properly debatable if we come back. As far as the flume goes, it's basically just moving the mixed-use residential line a little bit further off of Nashville Road.
So it's your preference, Chris, if I understand you correctly, is to have us consider this just on the flume merits tonight and then have those DPC and density discussions at the next meeting, kind of as?
I think that's the right thing.
That would be my preference, just so we don't do it twice conceivably.
Very good. I agree.
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport?
There's gonna be some discussion about the traffic impact study, I think.
Very good point. So you're, I will even update you a little bit. Your staff report says that there was gonna be a meeting, I think, on the 16th. We had that meeting. The transportation folks told us what we want. So in your DPCs, you do not see a traffic development condition because when we filed this, we didn't know what it was gonna be. If and when it comes back, what I tendered today has the condition with what they want. And I'll tell you, generally speaking, ultimately, they're gonna want a light at this intersection, I believe. When I say this intersection, I believe ultimately, they're gonna want a light to the property to the north, right around here somewhere, okay? Because we don't control that property, what they're gonna, what they're asking us to do is we're either gonna put that light in with conjunction with our, our landowners to the north, or we're gonna put a restricted, R-cut-right-out-only system in. But that's what, you'll see that when we come back. But Ms. Sissel, that conversation has happened since the staff report was done for the flume
Okay, commissioners, any other questions?
Chris, in the project summary, it says developer anticipates that improvements to the existing sewer infrastructure and traffic infrastructure may be necessary. You probably answered the traffic part, may be necessary as the development moves forward. What are the immediate sewer infrastructure?
Someone doesn't bring us to us first before we start building, we're gonna have to drag it the rest of the way. And I don't, and I don't know if that includes pump stations or not at this point, Mr. Starks, but clearly, the whole development has to be on sewer. So we, we have to build it for it.
Thank you.
I initially said that the infrastructure was all good to go, and the staff pointed out, no, hold on a second, your developer may have to make some improvements to the sewer, and they were right.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions? All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here tonight who has, who wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Okay, hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve the proposed future land map, use map amendment, docket number 2024-03 Flume. Based on the testimony and documents presented at this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU 114 Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented at the public, witnesses at the public hearing.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Bollinger?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, sir. Motion is approved and will, recommendation will go to?
Final action.
Pardon me?
Final.
Final action, okay. Thank you, thank you for catching that for me. Okay, the next item on our agenda is 2024-37 Z County. The applicants are proposing to rezone 55.2 acres located on the west side of Hedge Street at the intersection of West First Street and adjoining CSX Railroad to the south from Ag to RS-1C in order to develop the property with a maximum of 190 single-family residential lots. And Rachel, would you present our staff report?
Yes, sir, thank you. We had a pre-application meeting back in August.
We had a pre-application meeting back in August. This property may look familiar. I'll go over the history here in just a minute. But the area in question, if you look at this dashed line here, it's basically everything to the right of that is what's for your consideration this evening. That contains around 55 acres. And this is the aerial view for the property. And then the current zoning is agriculture. The use is also agriculture. And then the future land use map is a mix of mixed-use residential and low-density residential. We also have property photos if we need to reference these. And then, oh, that's okay. I'll go download it real quick.
Rachel, can we ask a couple of questions while you're doing that?
You can. I'll, I'll try to multitask.
You're good, you're good at it. So if I remember correctly, this density they're asking for probably doesn't change much from the density that was here a few weeks ago or a month or so ago.
It is lower, but it's not significantly lower.
And if I remember correctly, and they're asking for like 198 houses, is that correct?
Uh, 190.
190. Which was the number we were trying to get them to that night on the 75 acres. Wasn't it 75 acres originally?
75.93.
Okay, so really, all that's been done, the difference, unless you're going to tell us otherwise, in this application compared to a month or so ago is they've just chopped 20 acres off and pretty much kept close to the same density.
Yes, and I do have a summary of the differences, and I'll
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I'll review that in detail here in just a sec.
All right.
So, thanks for your patience. This is the current concept plan. And the applicants have proposed to rezone this area from Ag to RS1C, single-family residential. If we look at the property history, again, this may look familiar because the entire property was before you back in July of 2024. That application was withdrawn following a tie vote by the commissioners that were present at that particular hearing. If you look at the bottom of page one, there's the third bullet point there that outlines the differences for those of you that were here, who may be curious what those differences are. Again, we've touched on this a little bit already, but the land area was reduced from 75.93 to 55.2. The number of lots was reduced from 165 to 190. There is a typo in your development plan conditions on page four, number two. Just to clarify, that should be 190.
Can you repeat that again, please?
If you'll read that lot reduction again, I think.
Yeah.
From the original lot count in July was 265.
Okay.
The current lot count proposed is 190.
Okay.
And I just wanted to point out that in the text portion of your report on page four, in the development plan conditions, number two, the text that's spelled out reads 265. And then in parentheses, the, the number 190 is in parentheses, but it's supposed to be 190.
I see.
So I think that was an oversight from the prior application. So just wanted to clarify that. And then, the density was reduced from 3.49 to 3.44. And the applicants have now added a requirement that at least 25% of all homes in the development shall not use vinyl as an exterior building material, except for in soffits and trim. So those are the main differences. Back on page one, looking at a couple of points for your consideration, we have noted items on prime farmland, and that's going to be found on page three. And we've noted that a majority of the area proposed to be rezoned is classified as prime farmland. And then, under open space, also on page three, we've noted that the maximum lot coverage in the proposed zone is 70%, which means a minimum of 30% of each lot will remain in open space, except for, so that would be the bright green lots. The dark green lots would be required due to the development plan conditions that are imposed. Those lots would have a minimum of 40% open space per lot. The applicants did not propose any formal open space areas or amenities that would serve the site. And so the planning commission should determine if the amount of open space provided is adequate and of scenic or ecological value, and if the application complies with LU 2.1.1. So those were the couple of items that we wanted to point out. Overall, we did find that the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and found the proposal to be generally compatible with the surrounding area. And therefore, our staff recommendation is for approval pending any public hearing, testimony, and discussion. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Rachel, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The 20 remaining acres.
Mm-hmm.
Would that have to come back before this commission to be rezoned at a time that he plans to develop that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, so the 55 acres before you this evening, that's all that's subject to the rezoning application. And then if we go back to the zoning map on one of the previous slides here, let me just jump back if it'll let me. So if this were to be rezoned this evening, or recommended to be rezoned, only what is outlined in red would change. Everything else would still remain in its current zoning classification of Ag.
Was there any consideration, and this may be a question for the applicant, was there any consideration given as to where the entrance of the development is now located, still in the same place?
It, it's still in the same location. Yep, right here.
And the Department, Department of Transportation will dictate that, correct?
So we, um, we did meet, that's kind of summarized in your staff report, on page number four. So we did meet with our staff, Warren County Public Works staff, and then the City of Smith Grove back in May. And during that meeting, it was determined that a traffic impact study was not required, but there were certain improvements that were requested as a part of the review. And so I can read those, just if, if anyone's curious. So during the first phase of the development, the developer shall improve the intersection of Hedge Street and West First Street at the entrance to the development. So that's right here where my cursor is. And that would have to be done in coordination with the City of Smith Grove and the Warren County Public Works Department. The development shall not exceed 100 lots until such time improvements to Hedge Street, West First Street, and West Fourth Street occur. West Fourth Street is to the north. It's, it's not on this exhibit, but that's another street that feeds into Hedge Street from the east. And then individual lots are not permitted to have direct access to Hedge Street. So those were the requirements that were requested as a part of that review and during that meeting back in May.
All right, and they're, they're, they're able to bring this application back because it was a 2-2 vote last time, correct? And there wasn't a decision made?
There, there was no decision, and also, the land area has changed.
Okay.
And Ben may have more to add.
Yeah, I'll further add to that. We did have a discussion on that, and I was not in, in favor of bringing that back. But we're all still working, trying to figure out this new alternate zoning process.
Okay.
And the applicants offered to withdraw that, and then we told them at the planning commission that it would be forwarded to the fiscal court. We spoke with the county attorney and learned that, that that is not the process we follow anymore. So there's no more withdrawing proposals. It's either the 21 days or nothing. So since we didn't quite get that right, I felt it best to go ahead and bring that back. Otherwise, we probably would have made them wait the year.
Okay.
I had a question for you, Rachel, as it pertains to the language of this, of what triggers the improvements on Hedge Street.
Mm-hmm.
The, the language says the development shall not exceed 100 lots until such time as the improvements occur. And so I wondered if you can shed any light on what that phrase, exceed 100 lots, means? Does that mean it gets platted?
Probably permits.
Or that they have a building permit for 100 lots? Or they have occupancy permits for 100 lots? It might be good if we clarified that a little bit so we'd know what, what event has to trigger those improvements. And I asked that question primarily directed over your shoulder to, to Mr. Pardue, that he might clarify that when he presents.
I, I believe the intent was permits, 100 permits, because if you've platted 100 lots and they're not developed and there's no one living there.
We won't, I, I don't think they would, nobody would sign off on the plat. They cannot plat even the 101st lot before the improvements would be made similar to what was done in Springwater, CO.
I agree with you.
Nor, nor would we issue a 101st building.
But I guess, yeah, so if we plot, we would plot 100 lots, but not 101.
Correct.
Yeah.
Rachel, in, in looking through our ordinances and things pertaining to zoning districts, am I right in the fact that either RS1B or RS1C, that twin homes are permissible on either of those?
They are, but only if those are a part of the development plan that comes before you initially. So right now, the preliminary development plan that's on the screen only calls for single-family detached homes. And so that's part of this record. And while those zoning districts do allow twin homes, that's not what's proposed and not what's part of the record. So if that were proposed later on, if this did move forward, they'd have to come back and apply to them in their development plan through another public hearing.
So that's addressed with the DPCs, then?
It's not in the DPCs. It's just that this development plan, the concept that's on the screen is part of, basically considered as part of the development plan, which includes the development plan conditions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So during the initial development phase, they cannot develop twin homes, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. If, if this moves forward and they received approval of the zoning and they tried to turn in a subdivision plat for twin homes, we would not, we would not permit that unless they came back before you in another public hearing. Which would also, they would have to wait one year before they could make changes to that.
Do you know if there's been any discussion with CSX and it's, and the sewer being at capacity at this point in time?
I'm not aware of the details of any of those conversations. That might be best for the applicant to address that.
Would it be fair to say, though, to, to further address Ms. Ritchie's question, let's assume that it is at capacity, that expense would be borne by the developer, though? Is that correct?
Right.
Let's say they had to improve the sewer. They have to, they, they would, they would bear the cost of that.
Yeah, either they would have to bear the cost of that, or I guess if they just waited.
Right.
Somebody else could potentially extend sewer to the property. But if they received approval of the zoning and wanted to begin in the near future, then they would be responsible for that.
So no one could move forward with this, though, until that condition is met? Would that be an accurate statement?
Right.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And is the applicant, are their representative here tonight?
Mr. Graham, Tad Pardue, 1010 College Street, Square to Tell the Truth.
Thank you. Tad, I'm just going to jump, jump to a couple of things. If I remember correctly, we tried last time to help you guys get approved. Tim and I did. And we tried to get you almost to a 275 density. I think we tried to get y'all to come down to closer to 200 units. I'll just be honest with you, I, I don't really like how this looks, just cutting 20 acres off and keeping the same amount. I, I mean, I'm just going to be honest with you. To me, you, you guys should be here asking for 140-ish houses instead of 190.
So, uh, thank you for the comment, and thank you for going ahead and getting that out there, Commissioner Volker. What, what we heard, or what we perceived that we heard in July, were a lot of comments and criticisms about traffic. And what we took those criticisms to be was traffic caused by the sheer size of the development. At that time, 76 acres, 275 homes. The decision, once the tie vote came, after discussing it with staff and sitting down with Jeremy, we, and with the engineers, what we took from that hearing last time and the comments made, both from the opposition and from the commissioners, was we need a smaller development. So that's the reason why what's being proposed now is nearly 30% less than what it was. We did not perceive the issue so much as density as it was, because there were comments made, 265 potential lots in a community with.
I understand, I agree with that, and I would buy that if you kept all 75 acres in. But now you've got 20 acres in the back that in a month, six months, a year, you'd come back and ask for some rezoning of it. And depending on who the commission is, and, and times change. But so, listen, and, and you know, you're here, I'm a positive vote, and I'm for, I'm for development. But I, I think if you were going to do that, you left all 75. Now, if you put all 75 acres back in, I, I think it, I think it holds a lot more water.
There was, if I recall, there was some discussion in July, at the hearing in July, about, and I believe there may be, be even been an amendment or an agreement on the floor about getting the density from the 3.5 range to 3.
I, I came up with 2, I came up with 275, a density of 275. If I, and, and, and I'm, I'm going back on memory from that night. And I mean, that got, got, the 275 got you down close to the 200 units, 205. And, and, and that was, I think, Tim and I fighting for you guys on the 200, but I don't think everybody was in agreement on that number. I think we were trying to get somewhere to have some more discussion about it. And then that was, that was, pretty much said, no, we can't do that. And, and I understand from a development cost. I get it, and I understand it. But I, I think with what's been brought here tonight is, you just leave so much unquestioned about the 20 acres. And, and I, I think everybody who's sitting here looking says, something's going to happen with that 20 acres at some point.
Well, maybe. I, I mean, what we're doing tonight is we're creating a record. And whenever, if ever, whether it's Jeremy or someone else, applies and comes before this commission with a request to rezone that property, it has the record of what was discussed.
I understand, I understand.
Right? So that property is zoned Ag, it'll remain Ag. Again, I, I just, I don't want to mislead anyone.
No, 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 I'm not saying, and I'm not saying that, so.
But I, what, what I do want to convey is the, the reason why the changes that were highlighted by Rachel in the staff report were made, and those, from our perspective, arose wholly out of what we thought we heard from the, the, the commission back, and both, and the opposition as well, back in July. And that was, if you'll recall, predominantly concerns about the volume of traffic generated by 200, what would potentially be 265 homes on 76 acres. We got together and took that to mean, let's make it smaller. Let's make the impact less.
Why not leave all 75 acres in, then?
It's just as large. It's just as large.
But, but you know if I, I mean, I'm just telling you from my opinion, what I hope, tried to get you, I mean, if that's the case, and you left all, in my opinion, you left all 75 acres in, and you're trying to make it smaller, because, I mean...
Well, and we, we won't dispute that...
Would you guys consider going to the 275 density?
I'll have to talk to Jeremy. I, I do think Jeremy would be comfortable going to the 3 density. And let, and let me say this about density, this is proof I would, I would have elicited or might in any event. The criteria through which this commission is charged with reviewing and making a decision this evening includes the flume, the future land use map, and the comprehensive plan. I took testimony from Ms. Hurt back in July, and she said that the density of this development as proposed back then, which was, I think, 3.49 dwelling units per acre, in accordance with HN 1.2, right out of the comprehensive plan, would be, in accordance with the comprehensive plan, it's not her standard, my standard, it's the comprehensive plan, would be what the comprehensive plan says is compatible to the surrounding areas. That is, no more than 50% of the density of the surrounding area defined as located within 1,000 feet. So my, my position as it relates to the density that is proposed here this evening is that objectively, under the standard that you as commissioners are charged with applying, objectively, it is already compatible at 3.44. That proof was taken in July, and I'm prepared to take that proof from Rachel here today. So with that as a backdrop, though, I appreciate everything you're saying, Commissioner Volker, and I will have that conversation with Jeremy as to where he might be willing to land as it relates to density on the 55 acres. I'm happy to do that. But I, but I did not, I would be remiss if I did not...
I agree, I agree with everything you say.
...get into the record the fact that when you, when you look at the standard, the criteria legally through which this commission is charged to make a decision, 3.44 is what the comprehensive plan defines as a compatible density in this area.
So, so Tad, I'll add this, I don't think we should confuse what is acceptable under the comprehensive plan with, so if we, if we hearken back to that night, we already had a vote that didn't pass. What Chris and I tried, or what we've tried to do was, Christian and I tried to give you a path forward. If there was a way to make it work, that's what we were proposing. We're not arguing with you, saying that, you know, the comprehensive plan doesn't support it, right? We were just looking for a path forward.
And I don't even know if it was a path that would've been successful.
We don't even know that, at this point.
I was, I think we tried that night to give you a path forward for discussion. And, and to me, I think what's been brought tonight, it's the same thing we had.
It seems to be the same, the same conversation.
It's just a different color. Well, it's 30% smaller, with 30% fewer homes maximum.
But it's 30% smaller in acreage.
That's correct, the overall footprint...
Yeah.
In terms of scale...
Yes.
And the overall number of potential homes or lots in the development is 30% smaller. And what we were hearing that evening, in, in trying to be transparent with the commission, is that this is too big, this is too large in scale compared to the size of this community, and it's gonna generate too much traffic based on the sheer number of potential homes.
And I think you're 100% correct, and I think if all 75 acres were part of this project that you were bringing tonight, I'd be like, man, that's great, y'all have gotten down to this number.
Well, and that's, and that is more of a density issue than it is a volume and size issue, which is what we were not hearing from the, from, from the opposition and the commission.
But if that other 20 acres comes in six months, then it's a, then it's a volume and density issue.
And fortunately, this commission has the discretion on whether or not to approve or deny that.
Sure.
But again, I, I just want the commission to know where we were coming from in, in putting something, making changes and putting something different before you all this evening.
So neither Christian nor, pardon me, could, could even say that would work. Once again, we were just trying to give you something to have a discussion about, right? And I'm sorry, I interrupted.
That's okay. You know, I just, I remember the night well, I believe I made the, the statement that this is not compatible with Smith Grove. When you look at the median density, it's 2.37, with an average density of 2.78. I noticed a lot of the streets have been redirected, and I wondered in doing that, as far as putting that on paper, were sinkholes looked at and rerouting those streets and things of that nature? I understand that you rerouted the streets to get the maximum number of lots on that 55 acres, but it still remains that we have an infrastructure problem and we have a density problem.
And, and thank you, Ms. Ritchie. So, try to address those one by one. The street, the streets that are depicted on this concept plan are just that, they're in concept. Only if the application was approved and the development went forward, would it then, you then get engineers involved, and you would examine things like sinkholes and, and things of that nature to determine, in fact, how the streets line out. As it relates to infrastructure, again, that, that conversation or that topic came up in July. There, there are obstacles in terms of sewer and water, we all know that. Those costs, in the event this were to be approved and developed, are borne by the developer. Roughly two months before this, this, the prior application was heard in July, I'll remind the commission that we came before you all with an application to rezone 30 acres, 30 acres that is just 200 feet or so from this property. You could stand in, on Jeremy's property and hit a golf ball there, 30 acres for a brand-new elementary school. An elementary school that will be built to accommodate 850 to 900 students, that I would submit to you all would generate exponentially more traffic than this single-family subdivision as proposed. That elementary school faces the same obstacles in terms of infrastructure, sewer, and water. There was little said at the hearing on the elementary school application about traffic, and this commission approved the rezoning of that property by unanimous vote, so...
But, but to that point, as a commission, we really don't have the power to say no to a school.
You could, whether or not it would hold up.
Well, that's, you know, I mean, we've all, I mean, I mean, let's be honest with each other, we really don't, so...
We are being, yeah, we're being honest.
And you're right. I mean, so, so that's, that's part of the reason you don't have a lot of discussion about it, is, and I don't, I don't discredit what you're saying, and I understand, but if we're gonna put all the cards on the table, let's, let's put them all on the table.
Right. Well, so, so...
And Tad, we're not, we're not for a moment suggesting that you're trying to be deceptive in any way, at all, just trying to give you a path forward.
Sure. And so, and, you know, so, on the, on the issue of infrastructure, we crossed that bridge last time, and I think Commissioner Graham, you had already brought it up tonight. The, the truth of the matter is that you can't move the first piece of dirt to develop this property until those issues are addressed.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
And again, respectfully to Commissioner Ritchie, objectively, under the standard you are to apply, we, and we believe the testimony will support this from the staff, that this is pursuant to the comprehensive plan, what the comprehensive plan defines as compatible in terms of density. That doesn't mean we won't consider and have a conversation about reducing that number, because it's, clearly, that's, that's the sticking point, and I'm happy to have that conversation.
So, Tad, as you discuss with Mr. Riggs, the density question, could you also discuss with him the additional 20 acres?
Well, so, that's not, Hamp will probably correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
But I think in order for the commission to consider the additional acreage, we wouldn't be able to go forward this evening, we would have to file another application.
Yeah, they're not gonna talk about 20 acres.
Now, if we all look at each other in the eye, be honest with, with each other, and say that that might be the better path, that's a conversation I can have with Mr. Riggs as well.
I mean, I think just that, I think just the honest question, I think what, I think Mr. Starks and Ms. Ritchie are asking is, does he see a time when he'll try to develop the 20 acres? And he might have an answer to that.
Well, and I think, I think his answer's gonna be, I don't know. I mean, I think in, in a lot of ways, you don't know until...
Sure, till you do it.
This one takes off.
I get it, I get it.
So...
Could you still ask him, though?
Oh, Mr. Starks, I absolutely will. I plan on doing that right now. Commissioner Ritchie, any other questions?
Well, I'd like for Rachel to pull up one of those pictures again, that shows the curve where the entrance will be to the development, and I know that's subject to change...
Yes.
Based on, but I'd like for everybody just to see where that's located and what it looks like, because it is a dangerous curve, and Ms. Wardlow's yard is there, right there, right there is the curve.
But isn't that, isn't that part of the road that will be fixed?
Right, if you look, yes, that's a good point, Commissioner Volker.
I mean, I, I understand, Ms. Ritchie, what you're saying, but I think part of, before they can get a, a permit to move dirt, part of the road, there's situations with the road that'll have to be fixed.
Yeah, road and improve the intersection.
Yes.
If you look at the way the DPC's written, I guess first and foremost, we want an entrance, but insofar as where that entrance is...
You're talking about a construction entrance at that point, though, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, but let's, let's answer Ms. Ritchie's question directly.
Right.
You would not have people living in that subdivision with this road in that...
That's correct.
...in its existing condition.
Right, absolutely.
They would have to make, they would have to make that change prior.
But you can go ahead and develop houses, right, up to 100?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
No, I, I think, I think that was Hamp's point of clarification, they would get, they would get, they could plat...
Well, there's two conditions.
Okay.
Yeah. So the first is that during the first phase, so before you can get, just like if you have one lot...
Right.
Basically, up to 100 lots, the developer is required to approve this intersection, where this curve is, where the dominant entrance is...
So, don't pass go, don't collect $200, first thing you do is fix that, right?
Right. That's before anything can happen.
Okay.
And then after the...
Secondary.
The second trigger then is, once you reach 100 lots, you don't get any more lots after that unless you improve the actual roads of Head Street, West First Street, and West Paul Street. So there's two different requirements.
So does that answer your question, Ms. Ritchie?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Tim, my, my thought and suggestion would be, first, let's hear back from Tad on, on this. I mean, I, I think we, I think we, I mean, I'm not trying to stop anybody from getting up and speaking tonight, but I think we've, we heard you loud and clear last meeting. And so I think we need to see what, what is said here first.
I've been waiting for Tad, I think it's important to, for all of us to remember that everybody who's gonna vote on this application, with the exception of Mr. Starks, has already heard this once.
True.
But we gotta remember that...
Sure.
Mr. Starks is hearing it for the first time. And secondly, it's an all-new application, we've got to make an all-new record.
Okay, understood.
And for instance, if Tad needs more time, we could go ahead and start taking testimony from the neighborhood, but it's like he's ready to go back to the podium.
Okay. So, speaking with Mr. Riggs, he'll agree to drop the number of lots to hit the 2.75 density.
That's how many lots?
And I think that's somewhere around 152 or...
51, something like that.
Yeah.
And you guys correct my math, with that number, even if he brings the 20 acres back, he would be back to that, that other number. Is that right, Mr. Riggs?
And I think Mr. Riggs has authorized me to say, if there comes a point in time in the future that he wishes to develop and rezone the other 20 acres, he will agree to the same 2.75 dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
And you can put, you're, you're comfortable with that, right? And that can go in the record, I mean, that'll be in the record here.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
And so commissioners, any other questions or discussion for Mr. Pardue?
You answered my question.
Well, about the 75, I think, I think we answered it. He, he, the, in order for the commission to make a decision this evening, to, to approve rezoning this evening, he has to stick with the 55.2. But what he's, what he's permitted me to say on the record, Commissioner Starks, is that if there ever comes a time when he wishes to develop and rezone the other 20 acres, he will agree not to exceed the 2.75, so that...
So in effect, it's the same amount?
You get the same thing.
Same thing, okay, thank you.
How are we doing, Hamp?
You okay?
And I want to make sure this dialogue makes the minutes.
Agreed.
And, you know, there, there are a lot of other facts that I want to get into the record as it relates to this, the compatibility of this development, where it's located and proposed.
Yeah, I don't mean to cut you off...
Right, well, and I, and I, so, I'm prepared to go forward and do that, and I, I think to protect my client and the record, I probably ought to do that.
I do, too.
And, and, and what I really want to give the, you all as commissioners the benefit of, of having is hearing those facts and that testimony, not from me, but hearing it from the staff. I think I did that last time through Ms. Hurt, and I think that's the way I want to do it this evening, so that you're not, you don't, it's not coming from, it's not argument...
I like that, and I had forgotten that Mr. Starks had not, Commissioner Starks had not heard this, so please, please proceed.
Sure. And I guess Ms. Hurt is under oath, right? She, did she, was she sworn in in the beginning?
Yes.
Okay. And Rachel, thank you for taking time to answer these. So, as it relates to the, the review criteria, we have the future land use map, and it's my understanding and reading the staff report that this property, as it is identified on the future land use map, is designated as low-density residential and mixed-use residential.
Yes.
And the majority of the 55 acres that the commission's considering this night, tonight, is designated as mixed-use residential on the future land use map, is that right?
Yes.
And the, what's proposed this evening, proposed is 190, we've agreed to reduce it to around 151 or 2 lots. What's proposed here this evening includes RS-1C, but with 20% of the lots built pursuant to RS-1B standards.
That's right.
The staff report has, or the staff has determined that that proposal is in compliance with the future land use map, is that right?
Yes.
You spoke about, or you briefly, during your presentation to the commission, described the meeting that was held back in May of this year to address traffic issues. The folks who were present at that meeting were the applicant, the planning commission staff, Warren County Public Works, City of Smith Grove.
Yes.
KYTC wasn't involved because it doesn't involve a state road, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I think, I believe it was Mayor Stiffy and the Chief of Police in Smith Grove.
Yes.
And at that meeting, discussion occurred about what was proposed, and back then it was 265 lots on 76 acres, and the potential impact of traffic from that development. And from that discussion, it was agreed that there were three primary things that were gonna be asked of the developer in lieu of a traffic impact study.
Yes.
That being improvements at the outset of development, improvements if and when the development hit 100 lots, and then the stipulation that any lots that adjoined Head Street... and then the stipulation that any lots that adjoined Head Street would not have access to Head Street.
That's correct.
Everyone in that meeting agreed to those. The applicant, Jeremy, submitted development plan conditions that agreed to each and every one of those stipulations or requirements that were recommended. And again, when I say each and every person during that meeting agreed to those, Mayor Stiffy was part of that meeting, is that right?
He was part of that meeting, yes.
As part of its review, I think the staff looked at site design and compatibility. Is that right?
Yes.
And again, in looking at compatibility, the staff looked at density, correct?
We did.
And the staff specifically looked at density of other residential areas within a quarter-mile radius of this property. Is that right?
We did, yes.
And did the staff determine that the density of the development that's proposed this evening, 3.44 dwelling units per acre, complies with what the comprehensive plan would say is compatible with the areas surrounding it?
Yes, there's a recommendation of 1.5 times the density of the surrounding area.
And that's HN 1.2 in the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
And that's not your standard, that's not mine. That's the standard that's set forth in the comprehensive plan that the commissioners are charged to follow.
To review, yes.
Okay, better word. Now, in terms of the surrounding land uses to this 55 acres, are there surrounding existing land uses to this development that are consistent with what's being proposed here, those being single-family residential?
Yeah, let's go back.
Is that existing? Okay. So we have the existing land use map. Are there existing land uses surrounding this 55 acres that are consistent with what's being proposed by the applicant tonight, single-family residential?
Yes, so everything yellow on this map is single-family residential. It's the same use as proposed.
How do I go to the zoning?
It should be back. You put the top arrow on the scroll bar, or we can actually...
Oh, I see it. So we talked about existing land uses. We've established that there are existing land uses surrounding this property, just like what's being proposed, single-family residential, right? Now, in terms of actual zoning, are there a number of residential areas immediately adjacent to this property that are actually zoned for multifamily use?
Yes, those are the properties that are red on the map.
Red on the map, and those are zoned, I think, RM3, is that right?
Yes.
And what the applicant's proposed this evening is RS-1C, which would not involve any multifamily at all, is that right?
That's correct.
And a multifamily use, or multifamily, RM3 as a zoning category, it could allow for a much more intensive, more dense residential use than what's being proposed by the applicant?
On the face of that, it's only district.
It could.
It could.
That's right. So those properties in red, that are immediately adjacent to this one, if a property owner or developer were to seek to develop, remove the existing homes on those properties and develop those, there could be multifamily apartment units there, is that right?
Yes, if that development met all of the parameters for minimum lot areas and that sort of...
I guess the point being, they wouldn't need to have that property rezoned.
Correct.
In performing its review and analysis of this application, did the staff look at comparing home sizes and Jeremy's proposal to home sizes already in the vicinity of this property?
We did.
What did the staff determine was the median size of homes currently existing in the immediate vicinity of this property?
We found that home sizes range between around 750 square feet to 2,000 square feet. The median home size is 1,100 square feet, and the average home size is just under 1,200 square feet.
Okay, so median home size of homes in the immediate vicinity is 1,100 square feet, and the average is 1,200 square feet?
Just below that, it's 1,172.
Okay. So the proposal before the commission this evening, the minimum home size agreed to by the applicant as set forth in the development plan conditions is 1,250 square feet, is that right?
Yes.
And that's a minimum?
That's correct.
And at a minimum, what's proposed here is still greater than both the mean and the average home size in the immediate vicinity of this property?
Correct, more than both the median and average, yes.
And that's the minimum that has been agreed to?
Right.
Okay. In looking at compatibility and site review, did the staff look at houses in the vicinity and whether those houses had garages?
We did.
Is it accurate to say that the majority of homes in the vicinity of this proposed development do not have garages or carports?
The homes on Head Street between West Sixth and West First, the majority of those homes do not have a garage or a carport.
And the applicant in what's before the commission this evening has committed to garages attached to every single home, is that right?
That's correct.
As far as building materials, what did the staff determine were the building materials of the existing homes in the vicinity of this proposed development?
The majority of the exteriors are vinyl.
I believe there were notes about there also being some aluminum?
Yes, a couple of homes utilize aluminum siding, and there are a couple of homes that have brick exteriors.
Are the building materials set out by the applicant in what's before the commission this evening of consistent, if not greater, quality than the building materials used in the homes in the vicinity?
Yes.
Are there some areas in the immediate vicinity of this proposed development that do not have sidewalks?
Yes. So on Cave Street, there are sidewalks on both sides of a majority of Cave Street. There are no sidewalks on Orion, Sunset, or Post Office Alley. There are no sidewalks on West Sixth, but there are sidewalks on at least one side of the street on Second, Third, and Fourth.
So there are some roads without, and some with sidewalks on just one side?
Yes.
In the vicinity currently existing? And with what's being proposed here this evening pursuant to the subdivision regulations, the developer will be required to put sidewalks throughout the entire development, correct?
Correct, on both sides of the street.
On both sides of the street. In terms of orientation of homes and screening, whether it be on Head Street or the internal streets to the development, did the applicant accept and agree to all the recommendations made by the staff?
They did, yes.
In all of this, sort of globally, being part of the staff's review of compatibility, did it lead to the staff's determination that based on its review pending the hearing tonight, that this application be recommended for approval?
Yes.
I don't think I have anything else to add beyond that proof that was just put in the record. I probably need to get Mr. Riggs on the record to agree to the reduction in number of lots. And then beyond that, we'll take questions if the commissioners still have any questions.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ted.
And do we know the number on the lots exactly?
Yeah, it depends on how you round, 2.75 if you do 152.
Round down, I understand. Jeremy Riggs, 880 Greenlee Boulevard, Gallatin.
And Mr. Riggs, you have heard the proposal put forth by Tad Purdue regarding the density change for this application?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree to that change?
Yes, sir, and the future 20 acres.
Very good, all right. Thank you, sir.
Sure, any questions for me while I'm up here? Because I'd be glad to answer anything that you got.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So for the record, that would be a revision to DPC-2. Instead of 190 single-family lots, it would be 152.
Okay, is there anyone here in the audience this afternoon who has questions or opposition to this request? Okay, if you'd go ahead and come to the podium and state your name.
Yes, my name is Ashley Booker, and I just have a...
Excuse me just for a second, Ms. Booker. And what is your address?
317 Hydro, Ponsville Road, Smiths Grove.
All right, very good. And do you swear to tell the truth tonight?
Yes, I do.
All right, very good. Go ahead, proceed, Ms. Booker.
Okay, my concern is I own the Flavor Mall that's at the very end of First Street. And if you have to widen the road there, my business is literally already sitting on the road. And I have no other leeway. It's just what my building is in the parking lot is my business, and that's it. I'm very concerned about that issue because that's been in our family for 60 years. And I would like to keep it, it's our livelihood. So if there was any way we could do anything to not have your entrance and exit coming out on Head Street for that many amount of cars, that would be really helpful if you could really look into that.
So...
And I also have a petition that we have signed for that exact matter. And we have almost 1,250-something signatures.
Good, and would you submit that for the record?
Yes.
And so do we want to have Tad address that? A part of that may be dictated by the school as well.
Well, matters of Public Works.
Right.
We need an entrance.
Right. We're not saying, but if you could maybe like, see if you could find another place. I know it's probably hard to do because you're kind of landlocked in there against the railroad tracks, right?
Yeah. So Ms. Booker, I would say this. This is not something that this group is going to have the ability to change. That's going to be dictated by Public Works, unless Mr. Purdue tells me something different.
No, I just wanted to refer to the development plan condition itself does not specify where the entrance will be. It simply says it restricts us to a single access point, one, to be coordinated and approved by Public Works in the City of Smiths Grove.
I could almost assure you that his applicant would be amenable to a change in entrance, assuming Public Works said, okay.
Right.
You could change that. But I think they are going to be bound by what Public Works tells them.
Right, absolutely. I just wanted to make it known to him that we have a business there.
And I think you have agreement from the applicant. If that's within their purview, they are giving me the nod that they are in agreement with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, do I turn this in?
Yes, please. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who has questions or comments on this request? Mr. Stiffy, mayor?
Mayor David Stiffy, 214 Beeler Avenue, Smiths Grove, Kentucky.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please proceed.
I just want to make clear a couple of things, or try to clear up a little muddy. As Mr. Purdue has talked about when we had that meeting about the traffic and everything, of course, we have concerns about how the traffic's going to flow and the entrance and such. But I just want to make sure that everybody is a little bit more at ease. We would have to do this as a full commission, but I think I can speak on behalf of our whole commission that we would never consider taking anybody's property to widen streets. That's been our concern about this whole thing with the development. And it wouldn't actually be Public Works for the county. It would have to be for the City of Smiths Grove because it's all inside the city.
I see, okay.
So I speak on behalf of the city that we have no intentions of trying to take anybody's property. It's going to be a burden of the developer to try to make it work. And that's why I suggested at the meeting that we had earlier back in August that we try to divert the traffic down toward where the North Warren, the new school's going to be. We understand that's a problem because people don't want to go along this route. But there are some alternatives, but we definitely are never, never say never.
Right.
But we wouldn't consider taking anybody's property to try to widen a street for a development.
Well, I think Ms. Booker would welcome those comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight who has questions or comments on this application? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I make the motion to deny the proposed zoning map amendment, docket number 2024-37-Z-CO. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its noncompliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is not in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Ms. Ritchie? Your motion to deny is stated based upon the fact that...
Hamp, I think we need a second first. You need a second first.
Well, I was going to try to get her to add to the motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
A second. So, excuse me. Your motion to deny is stated as being not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. Can you tell us what parts of the Comprehensive Plan this application fails to meet? You've heard discussion about compatibility and density?
Yes, sir.
And if you could add to your motion in that regard?
Well, I'd like to say the compatibility. I live in Smiths Grove, been there a long time. And I do firmly believe in my heart that it is not compatible. I know you all have numbers, and you have different things that you have to go by, and you have to be objective like we do. So looking at it in that sense of the word, I do not believe that it is compatible.
Thank you. So, I wanted her to clarify her motion.
There we go. So we have a motion on the floor. We do not have a second.
I'll circle that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Hamp, would you now clarify, please? Thank you, sir. I see you nodding.
So, ladies and gentlemen, there's been a motion to deny made by Ms. Ritchie and seconded by Mr. Starks. If you vote yes on this motion to deny, you have voted against the proposal made by the applicant. If you vote no on the motion to deny, you are voting in favor of the proposal made by the applicant. There are five eligible voters on this motion. They are the four county appointees, plus Ms. Ritchie as the Smiths Grove representative on the commission. And so voting on this application will be Commissioner Graham, Commissioner Starks, Commissioner Volker, and Ms. Ritchie.
Okay, and Matthew, would you call Robles?
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
No.
Chair Graham?
No.
Two-two.
So, as you all are aware, you have the option of voting a second time. And as you've done before, since at this... since at this point, there has been a tie vote on a motion to deny. Nothing has passed by the planning commission in the form of a recommendation at this point. So there's no recommendation to be provided to the fiscal court. So I think the statute permits, and your bylaws, and the zoning ordinance permit you to attempt to break that tie, either with another motion to approve or deny, period.
So Hamp, if I understand correctly, the only way the tie would break is if someone changed their vote, reconsidered. And so I guess, based on what we just saw in that vote, and me being chair, can I second a motion if there was a motion?
Yes, so you have the power to second a motion.
Okay. So commissioners, would you like to entertain a motion to approve? I think that's the question on the floor.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with, in condition upon, the general development plan, Document Number 2024-37-Z-CO. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliances with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion to include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
I second.
So this time, there's a motion to approve the application that Mr. Perdue and Jeremy have made tonight. So a yes vote will be a vote in favor of their application for zoning map amendment. A no vote will be a vote against that application.
Matt Cuthbert, please.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
No, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Two-two.
So there have been two efforts to make a recommendation. There has been no recommendation either to approve or deny. And I don't know that there's any business that you all need to take further tonight.
So it will remain a tie vote, no recommendation to the fiscal court, correct? Okay.
Under the ultimate summary process, I guess we wouldn't forward the recommendation to the fiscal court. If there had been a vote that resulted in a majority, that would just be the recommendation.
Yeah, nothing for them to consider.
With the 21-day timeline to follow, they wouldn't want to propose the limits while you're here. But I think what Hamp has said is that since it's a tie, there's just no recommendation or decision.
And no 21-day limit as well, or is that the case?
I think we're finished with our business here tonight.
Very good. Very good. Okay, so with that vote, do we have any other items on our agenda? All right, thank you so much for everyone being here. We appreciate your input, and we are concluded for this afternoon. Thank you.